ended by the planning commission. State law establishes planning commissions. The planning commission is comprised of nine residents appointed to serve their community. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. Other individuals participating in the meeting include representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wortman Associates. If you wish to address the planning commission tonight, please come forward to the lectern when recognized and clearly print your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission and not to anyone else in the room. If you have a cellphone or any other device that might disrupt the meeting, please either switch it to the silent mode or turn it off. At this time, I'm going to ask the planning commission recording secretary, Kathy Sarnicki, to conduct the roll call.
Mr. Apahidian?
Here.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Faison?
Here.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Krantz? Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Ms. Parakis?
Here.
Mr. Rahmman?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarnicki. At this point now, is there a motion to approve the agenda tonight from one of the commissioners?
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Faison, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Cruz. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, a roll call for approval.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
Mr. Rahmman?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Agenda is approved. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the January 28th meeting? Motion by Mr. Tagle, is there a second, Mr. Apahidian? Any discussion on the motion to approve the minutes? Seeing none, we're ready for the roll call.
Mr. Faison?
Abstain.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
Mr. Rahmman?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Apahidian?
Yes.
The minutes from the January 28th meeting are approved. Now we're on to public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to the planning commission on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will then go on to public hearings. The first public hearing is a special use request, file number SU2019-0044. Proposed Korean United Methodist Church of Troy parking lot expansion, west side of Dequinder, south of Square Lake. The address is 42693 Dequinder, section 27, Zoned R1C, one-family residential district. Yes, Mr. Tagle.
Yes, I would like to let the commission know that a number of years ago, this applicant had retained our firm to do some architectural studies for this church. The agreement has now, it's been over for several years. I have no financial interest in particular project, but I wanted to let the commission know that.
Thank you, Mr. Tagle. Does anyone have a concern about whether Mr. Tagle can act on this issue?
No.
Nope.
No.
No concerns, then you can continue sitting with us.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Carlisle will speak on this.
Thank you. And before each night is a proposed expansion of a parking lot at the Korean United Methodist Church. The church is a well-established church. It's looking on the west side of Dequinder, just south of Square Lake. The applicant is proposing the construction of a net of 137 total additional parking spaces. The parking spaces, or the parking location is outlined in red in the screen above you. There's two spots. The larger area is currently a grassed area, including a ball field, and the smaller area is a gravel lot that is currently used for overflow parking. In addition to the parking lot, the applicant does propose increased landscaping and lighting. We want to note that there are no proposed changes to the actual physical building itself. It's simply the parking lot, lighting and landscaping. We base parking based upon the size of the sanctuary, and we require three, one parking space per three seats in the sanctuary. So based on the information provided by the applicant, they have approximately 1,000 seats within the sanctuary, and that equates to approximately 337 required parking spaces. Right now, there's an existing 399 parking spaces. They're adding an additional 137, so in total, they're going to provide, they're seeking approval for 536 parking spaces. A requirement of the zoning ordinance is that if you exceed the parking by over 20% what the ordinance requires, it requires a special approval from the planning commission. The reason for that is we want to ensure we right-size parking. We do not want to have more impervious surface than we need for both aesthetics reasons, as well as stormwater management, as well as some climate reasons. So that's why we ask for a special accession from the planning commission to grant parking above that 20%. With the additional parking, they're going to propose, they're exceeding the ordinance required by 59% of what the ordinance requires. In granting such space, the planning commission shall determine that parking is necessary to accommodate the use on a typical day. So this would be a typical day of service, the additional parking spaces are needed. As part of that review, the planning commission can put reasonable conditions upon that, such as the use of permial paving or like material to offset the amount of impervious surface and the amount of green space being lost. And that is a provision the planning commission can put upon the condition of approval. So in addition to the parking lot, they are proposing additional landscaping. They are meeting the landscape requirements. We do note that they are not proposing any interior landscaping within the parking lot addition. They're all the proposed landscaping that's required in the interior. They're placing on the exterior of the parking lots. So we are asking that the planning commission consider breaking up those massive areas of parking with some interior landscaping as well. The applicant is adding three parking lot lights. Two are located in the larger parking area. One is located in the smaller parking lot addition, and the photometrics all comply with ordinance requirements. There are seven special uses the planning commission shall consider. We do note that the applicant is adding additional parking to an existing church, so they're not fundamentally changing the use of the property as now. So with that being said, provided that the planning commission, the applicant can prove the satisfaction of the planning commission that the required parking is necessary, we do think that special use standards for this application have been met. So we are recommending the planning commission hold public hearing, consider public testimony, and discuss the need for additional parking. If the planning commission does find that the parking is necessary, we do recommend special use and preliminary site plan approval with the condition that the applicant add landscaping interior to the parking lot. Thank you.
Any questions from members of the commission? Mr. Faison?
Thank you, Mr. Jim. I'm just curious, just the magnitude of the parking overage at 59%. I mean, have we seen other similar projects where we've had that kind of overage?
The planning commission has granted overage to other developments before, and I can't, it's been a while since we've granted them. Typically, we allow for less parking for shared parking reasons.
Right, exactly.
I can't think of, you know, off the top of my head, and I can't think of any that are that extent of 59%, but again, it's just from memory.
Yes.
So there are some places of worship in the city with massive parking lots that are greater, that are larger than this one? They just didn't, at the time that they were approved, we didn't have this provision that put a limit on, you know, that capped it at 25% without planning commission approval. I would note that the applicant did provide a statement. I think it's in your packet.
I did see.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the commission? I just had two quick questions. One is, is the suggestion of a pervious paving solution for the addition, can you give us some examples of what that might entail?
There's various materials that can be used, everything from pervious concrete and pervious asphalt to grasscrete, which is basically concrete blocks that have grass grow in the middle. So really, we didn't prescribe a specific material. They would have to work with the engineering department to make sure it works sufficiently. But if that's the avenue of the planning commission wanted to go, I would simply suggest that you require some sort of material that the engineer can work with, I'm sorry, the applicant can work with the engineering department to confirm what that material would be. If, again, that's a discretion of the planning commission to go down the road of impervious material.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the commission? Seeing none, we'll invite the petitioner up to address the commission.
John Delislo with PEA in Troy, and the applicant?
Tim New with the Troy Korean United Methodist Church.
Okay, thank you. And just discussing the packet that was offered to us in the discussion here this evening, we'd like to request that you not impose the permeable pavement requirement on the lot. And we would note that while we are exceeding what's required by ordinance in terms of parking spaces, the cost is an issue for the congregation, and we're trying to keep that as small as possible. So while we did exceed the number that you see as being required, they met what they could do for the different programs that are offering, et cetera, and that was in the email from the applicant. But, you know, some of the grass pavers, for instance, the permeable pavement for maintenance and then the installation cost, it's substantially higher. And passing snow plows over that material can be problematic. I'm not sure how much the city has exposure to that in some of their sites, but it can be less desirable. If you have anything to add, Tim?
We will try our best to not only meet the requirements, however, the requirements of city codes or county city, county code, but my understanding and past construction experience, I'd like to continue on with the same level or same thickness of asphalt parking lot. So I don't know, that will address, I mean, that in terms of ours, will address the requirements stated in here, but it is our intent that we'll do exactly same as what we did three years ago.
Any questions from members of the commission? Yes, Mr. Faison?
One of the comments from the staff was potentially adding interior parking lot landscaping. Is that something that you would consider?
Um...
That is something we have discussed.
Right, we were informed, informed that maybe we should have planted some trees, number of trees, but the specific number was not stated. However, however, we'd like to work on the beautification part of the remaining lots. So I would say, yes, we have a definite plan to make the parking lot look good.
Yeah, and the east lot right now does have a parking island within it. We could look at the west as well, and I think we discussed that in terms of adding an island or something to visually...
Dead as well, yes.
Direct folks.
Right.
So yes. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Savin.
So as someone who's involved with site compliance inspection, so once this is approved, we go out and inspect and ensure that it's constructed to what the planning commission approved, it would be helpful if we knew how many trees.
Okay, all right. Any, Mr. Tagle?
Does not the ordinance call for a number of interior parking lot landscaping as far as square footage of, you know, islands and such?
So they've met the number, okay? But they're putting the trees on the exterior of the parking lot. So if you add up all these trees, et cetera, they've met the number, in terms of number. However, they're, you can see they're all on the exterior. What the ordinance requires is that every, for every eight parking spaces, you have one interior tree within 200 square feet of landscaped area. Put all that landscaping on the exterior of the parking lot.
Well, in your opinion, does that comply with what the ordinance...
The planning commission has the right to waiver that condition. And very few instances I can remember where you've actually wavered that condition. But we are recommending that they actually meet the ordinance requirements and put those trees within the parking lot itself.
Can you, I don't know if you've looked at this, but what does that translate into number of trees that will be moved to the interior portion of the lot?
I have a number for you. Give me a second.
Okay.
That's right. So they're required to have 18 trees. So interior, we counted this one as an interior tree, so essentially they had to require to have 17 trees interior. For example, there's a stretch, I mean, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11. So this is, I don't know, this is 16 spaces. This should be broken up with a, with an island, with a landscape peninsula and tree. This should probably have two within them, so that's what the ordinance requires. Every eight spaces, you're supposed to have an interior parking lot tree. And this is, the purpose of that is for a lot of reasons. One is for aesthetics, two is for stormwater management, and three is, you know, heat island effect, cooling effect, et cetera. So there are some significant environmental purposes behind why we put these street trees within, within the, within the ordinance itself, and within the parking lot itself. It does, it does a lot of good being interior to the, to the parking lots rather than the exterior.
Yes, Mr. Savin.
Yeah, and it's within the planning commission's purview to provide flexibility and have all those trees outside the parking lot if you desire. So whatever, whatever the planning commission decides, if it's all the trees or a portion of the trees, we just need to, we need to know what, specifically what the plan is, what's going to be approved.
Would the applicant be willing to comply with the ordinance as far as the interior landscaping that is required by the ordinance?
We knew there were some concern on the west, just to have some trees between the parking and the single-family homes. There is a wall there as well, but that was some of the consideration on the west. Others, making an area around the pond that perhaps could be utilized by the congregation, that's another driver there. But, you know, to certainly add some, I would think, or move some of those interior.
I believe, I personally believe it would be much easier to convince our congregations that if I plant enough trees around the parking lot, but, but not losing more spaces and then have island and plant a tree, I don't know that is such a good idea to present to our congregation. So my intent, if you ask me my opinion, that, that I like to put enough trees around the parking lot and then maintain 137 spots for parking. I don't know, I answered your question.
Well, it sounds like you do not want to comply with the ordinance requirements that you're looking for this commission to give you some relief from what the ordinance requires, because your congregation won't accept the ordinance requirements. I mean, you heard Mr. Carlisle's explanation as to why we have interior trees or landscaping islands to break up, not only aesthetically, but, but also for heat island effect and for the stormwater and all of that. So, you know, again, if I'm, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if you're saying to me that, no, we don't want to comply with the ordinance requirement, I guess that's really all I'm asking.
So with your quick estimation, how many is...
While you're thinking about that, why don't I have some of the other commissioners ask some questions? Ms. Cruz, I think you had your hand raised.
Well, the thing that, that sort of has me scratching my head is the formula that we're using, which is one parking space for every three seats in the sanctuary. So right now, we have just over 1,000 seats and 337 parking spaces, and we want to add 137 parking spaces, which to me means we need 411 more seats in the sanctuary. Like, where are you putting all these people inside the church that you're requiring all this additional parking? I mean, do you have just people lined up against the walls and in the aisles, and are you even complying with fire code required? I mean, that just is a lot.
Well, total number of square footage of our building, 67,000. And then many classrooms, gymnasium included, and then three main chapels, and then...
So let me just stop you here. You've indicated that you need these spaces because of typical day use, but is typical day use inclusive of your gymnasium, your chapel, and your classrooms all at the same time? That requires 137 net additional spaces?
The only time we need, typical use, only time we need additional parking space is Sunday. I'm going to say 9 o'clock to 1 o'clock. And then we're rotating our services, like main sanctuary, so three services we're rotating. Under just the new construction, two services we're rotating. The one in the middle, also two services in the middle. We're rotating our services to accommodate that.
No, I understand that.
And then that time, all the traffic comes and goes, that's where the problem lies.
So do you need traffic direction? Do you need someone out there directing traffic to get people in and out of the space between services, more than you need 137 more spaces?
We have been for past the three years. And then, to be honest, with the current parking lot, we have gravelled, they crushed the concrete, gravelled overflow parking space, which is violating the city code, but I, without realizing that is the code, I put that overflowing parking lot. And then to find a spot, we've been guiding our church members to find a spot. So the traffic within parking lot to find a spot gets increased and in this risk, dangerous situation. So we're looking for, now, once we do it, instead of 20 more spot, 50 more spot, why don't you look for whole options? Within the city requirement, why don't we just maximize our parking space and minimize the risk that people to try to find a spot? So that was the plan.
Okay, so then you're asking for the 139 additional spaces to maximize the current parking, not because you necessarily expect each one of the spaces to be filled every Sunday?
Probably, right, right.
But you're not sure that you can add interior landscaping because you might need the spaces on Sunday?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Parakis, you raise your hand up, then I'll go to Mr. Apahidian after you're finished.
Yeah, I guess my question, sort of following up with Mr. Tagle, is, is the reason that you don't want to go to the congregation to, to tell them about the interior landscaping because they don't want to lose the spots that it'll take up, or because it's cost prohibitive? I don't know. Does it cost more to put the island in the, within every eight spots? Is that what your concern is?
Well, cost is a subjective at this point. I know there will cost additional, but, okay, so back three years ago, when we had this extension, we had, I believe, little more than 100 parking spots. So it was about 200, almost 300. We add 100 with the new construction back three years ago. And now, three years later, I come back to congregation and says, oh, by the way, I need more parking space. So how often are we going to do that to our congregation? I know a church is growing exponentially. As I mentioned in my email, church members, church members' record shows 2,566, 690 families, 95 families, and it's growing. Every Sunday, we have a one-family average. So, so that was our key leadership's intent, that see if we can get maximum we can. So, so if commission, if commission says, nope, nope, we just go by with the rule. So let's say I lose 10 spots, 127, and then do island and stuff. If that's the rule that we have to play, we will comply. But I'll tell you that it is our intent. I think every, every organization's intent that minimize the cost aside and then maximize the value, and our value right now is a parking space.
Mr. Apahidian?
So, Mr. Carlisle, I did a little bit of math here, and the requirement based on the additional parking spaces would be about 18 trees that they're required to put within the parking spaces. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, we, so just to clarify that, we don't retroactively go back and have them put in trees for the existing parking. We're only applying the current code to the additional parking. So you take the 137 divided by eight, it's 18 or so trees.
So if they would put 18 trees, that would basically take up more than 18 parking spots, because depending on where they would put them, it could take up more, right? Am I seeing that correctly geometrically?
No, you could fit, an average parking spot's about 200 square feet, so that's the requirement for, for an island. So you could put in, you could, you could simply put in basically a tree in a parking lot.
In one parking spot.
And you could...
They would lose about 18 spaces if they put 18 trees, depending on where they would put them.
Mr. Apahidian, just, they've hired a very good engineer and a very good engineering firm that could lay, potentially lay out the site, the parking lot a little bit differently, where they could put those 18 trees in, and they may not lose 18 spaces. But I would think at a, at a maximum, I'll say, just based on the plan alone, at a maximum, they would lose 18 spaces, they had to put 18 trees in.
Yes, Mr. Rahmman?
So it seems like we're going to have additional spaces, right? As we discussed, like, these all additional spaces that we are adding, we are adding because we have some traffic, you know, parking issue, you know? So if we lose 18 spots, then what is the problem? Because we have 150 additional spaces there. Isn't it the right thing to do to comply with the city code and then just to have the trees planted in the right place, the way it's supposed to be?
Let me ask, let me ask this. Would we, and I'm asking of the commission, if they were willing to do some sort of pervious surface, would we be more flexible on the environmental benefits that come from having 18 trees?
What do you think?
I thought the applicant said they didn't want to do...
That's what I heard say.
That was too expensive and hard to maintain.
So then the trees are the lesser expensive or the, yeah, the more cost-effective option?
Mr. Apahidian?
So I'm hearing the applicant say, and I'm looking at their numbers here, their letter, that their congregation has multiple services, they're growing, and they can only, at this point, if they add this parking spot here, this parking lot on both sides, they're maxing out of the entire property of what they can do, even though the congregation will continue to still grow. So what they're requesting is every parking space comes at a premium. They're trying to put trees on, around the perimeter of this parking space, but every spot comes at a premium. And if I can ask a question, if I understood you correctly, your, your, the issue you have, some of the issue is during the services, the transition where some of the members are... transition where some of the members are coming and going during the services, where some of these spaces are being taken up for more than one service. So even though, if it would be, in an ideal world, you would have everybody show up at one service, and everybody leaves and makes room for somebody else, but that doesn't happen. You have a lot of overlap, and you need these spaces, not because the facility is being crammed with more people, but because you have some of the people that are staying from one service to another service, to another service, right? So I just want to make sure I understand that, and that maybe the commissioners understand that. That's one of the issues. You have these overlap of some of the members that are staying there, that some of the services, you need these extra spaces. So I just want to make sure I understand that correctly. So I guess my thought on this is, I, you know, I hear the applicant saying every spot matters to them at this point, because their congregation is growing. They can only get so much. So I'm just one vote, but I'm willing to compromise with the applicant if somewhere, I understand the ordinance says they have to have, as a letter of the law, they have to have so many, but if they're willing to meet somewhere halfway and provide some trees within the parking spaces, and, you know, their spaces are at a premium. So they know what their needs are a lot better than I do.
Yes, Mr. Tagle. All large churches face the same issue. Multiple services, a limited number of availability on the site. There is a cap to every site. I don't know if the church has considered expanding the time between services to allow the, let's say, the people that come to the first service to leave, and the second service starts a little bit later. That is an option that I've talked with large churches, and they understand that they have to do that, or else if a person can't find a parking space, guess what? They go home. They don't stay. So I understand the dilemma you're facing. I also don't necessarily think you're going to lose a parking space for every tree. I think there's ways to get to the number of trees without losing 18 parking or 17 parking spaces. I guess the issue I have is that there is an ordinance, and I don't think that we are unreasonable to enforce what the ordinance requires. But from what I'm hearing is that the congregation won't accept that. And I don't know if, for me personally, that's enough for me to say, okay, then you don't have to do it. Because every applicant comes before us, it doesn't agree with what the ordinance says, that we don't want to do that. And so, you know, I mean, I'm willing to look at a compromise. So if you're willing to say, look, we're willing to plant this number of trees in interior, in the interior portions of the lot, knowing that you're going to lose some parking spaces, or maybe depending on how PEA looks at the layout, maybe they can salvage the spaces and plant the trees in a way that you won't lose spaces. But I would, that's what I would try to work with you, but try to at least reach for what the ordinance requires. Mr. Savadon, and then Mr. Faison, I think you had a question, maybe?
Just to piggyback on what Mr. Tagle said, just a reminder, the planning commission, it is a special, it is a special use. The planning commission does have the authority to place reasonable conditions. And in fact, this is a requirement of the ordinance. It just happens to have administrative flexibility built in to allow, you know, trees planted elsewhere. But it is a special, it's not a negotiation. We have the authority to require this if we desire. And Mr. Lambert, just a reminder, it is a public hearing.
Yes, Ms. Paracus.
You know, I just wanted to add one more thing, along with all the environmental issues of having those islands. It's also a safety issue, I think, when you have a lot of people exiting a church, and you think about families and children. I know when I'm with my kids at the library, let's say, if a car's coming, it's nice for me to be able to say, okay, move over to the side, up on the grass, while cars are backing in and out of spots. So it offers, you know, every eight spots, it offers a place for people to move over when there's traffic trying to get by. So, you know, when you just have a huge lot with no place to really maneuver around as a pedestrian, I think it is a little bit, you know, it raises your risk of accidents as well. So that could be a selling point to your congregation, that it's also for safety purposes.
Any more questions for the petitioner before I open the public hearing? Just one question for our recording secretary. Terry, do you need them to sign in? Kathy?
That would be helpful.
Okay, if you could just sign in on that paper, and then, I don't know if anybody's here for the public hearing, but I'll read the rules for the public hearing, and then open it up. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. A public hearing is an opportunity for residents to share their comments on a specific project with the planning commission. Everyone in attendance who wishes to speak will be provided that opportunity. We appreciate everyone who came out tonight to share their thoughts with the planning commission, and your comments are important. Before I open the public hearing, it's important to set some ground rules so that it can be an effective and efficient public hearing. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward to the lectern when recognized and clearly print your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name, address, and where your home or business is located relative to the property that we are discussing tonight. Please address all comments to the planning commission. Please be respectful of the planning commission, staff, planning consultant, applicants, and those in attendance. This is an opportunity for residents to provide comment. It is not a discussion or debate. Additionally, this is a formal public meeting that should be handled with decorum and professionalism. So we ask that those in attendance refrain from talking, applauding, or other expressions of emotion during the meeting. Finally, all comments in the public hearing this evening should relate to the item under consideration, and each speaker will be limited to three minutes. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the planning commission on this issue? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing and return it back to the planning commission. Any questions or a possible resolution, or more questions for the applicant? Mr. Faison?
A question for Mr. Savadon. So you had mentioned earlier, if we wanted landscaping in the parking lot, we should specify the amount of landscaping. And so does this resolution reflect that level of specificity?
It does not. It does not. It was based on the assumption that the planning commission was going to provide flexibility that was requested by the architect. I didn't get that specific, knowing we're going to have this dialogue.
Okay, thank you. But saying something like consistent with the ordinance.
Well, I would be even more specific. I would say with the provision of X number, whatever the number is, landscape trees, if it's your desire to make a motion that they meet the ordinance in terms of the number of landscape island trees, you should specify the number.
Which would be 18?
Correct.
Any other comments from the commission? Ms. Cruz?
I just want to make sure that I understand this. Where the baseball diamond currently is, I'm going to call that, like, the west side of the property. There are homes there that, you know, are obviously used to having a baseball diamond in their backyard, and now potentially faced with having a parking lot. Did, I hate to admit that I don't know to look at this drawing. Was there a wall? Did I hear that there was a wall?
There's a masonry stone wall that runs along both the west and the northern property line.
Do we know the height of the wall?
Six feet, I believe.
Okay, okay. Just kind of want to make sure that those homes don't get, you know, an unexpected surprise when, you know, that baseball diamond goes away.
Mr. Savadon?
Those homes all received letters in the mail informing of this public hearing and the project.
Thank you. Any further questions, or someone want to make a resolution, or attempt a resolution?
I'll take it.
Okay, Mr. Faison?
Resolve that special use approval and preliminary site plan approval for the proposed Korean United Methodist Church of Troy parking lot expansion, west side of Dequender, south of Square Lake, 42693 Dequender, Section 27, zoned R1C, one-family residential district be granted, subject to the following conditions. One, add interior parking lot landscaping, 18 trees, to break the long expanses of parking spaces.
So you're second to that resolution. Mr. Rahman seconds it. And just for clarification, I believe, Ms. Dufresne, this requires five votes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, we're ready for a rule call.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Paracus?
Yes.
Mr. Rahman?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
No.
Mr. Apahedian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
No.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
You have five yes, two no's.
The resolution passes. And we are on to the next item on the agenda. This one is a, and I think, just for clarification for those who may be in the audience, or who will be watching at home, we are not going to be actually voting on this resolution tonight, because I believe it has to go to the zoning board of appeals, but I'm sure Mr. Carlisle will mention that in his remarks. But this is a special, a public hearing for a special use request. Proposed Long Lake Shell addition, southwest corner of Long Lake and Dequender, Section 13, currently zoned neighborhood node district. Mr. Carlisle.
Sorry, apologize for that. Director Savadon had it loaded up in the wrong spot. Thank you. Good evening. The proposed Shell gas station at the corner of Dequender and Square Lake, Long Lake, I apologize, is seeking approval for an expansion to their existing facility. They're proposing a 1,600-square-foot ground floor addition and a 760-foot second square floor addition. The ground floor addition is for the purpose of both expanding their convenience store, as well as adding additional indoor auto and part storage area. The second floor addition is for a private office. I want to kind of put a disclaimer in my comments before I start here. We are very happy and supportive of the investment on the site. The applicant is making a significant investment on the site, particularly with the facade and facade enhancements. That being said, in our review, we did note a few issues that the planning commission should consider as part of the site plan. So it may sound a little negative in my comments here, but really, it's a balance between the investment the applicant is making with some issues that we think we can overcome with regards to the plan itself. But just as a background, the applicant, again, is not proposing any changes to the building itself, the orientation, or the canopy, or site access, but they are making significant facade improvements, landscape improvements. It's located in a neighborhood node, and it does require a conditional use, I'm sorry, a special use because of the auto repair expansion. The site plan in front of you, the red building is existing. The yellow is the proposed addition to the existing building. If you'll note, there is a corner lot, so they have two front yards. They also have a side yard and a rear yard. The applicant has chosen this as their rear yard, which is the western property line. In this district, there requires a 30-foot building setback from the rear yard. As you can see, this existing red line, it's a non-conforming structure currently. They are asking approval to basically extend this non-conforming line to the edge of the, to the back of the southern property line. That requires a variance from zoning board appeals, because they're basically extending or expanding the non-conforming structure. Again, they're required to have 30 feet. This distance is only approximately 13 feet from this property line. So that is what is requiring a variance from the zoning board appeals. So when we did the site plan, we did note there were some issues that need to be discussed by the planning commission. First is, the applicant currently, if you look at the aerial, existing aerial, the applicant has outdoor storage in a lot of locations on the site. They have outdoor storage in this rear area where they're adding the expansion. They have outdoor storage along the side of the building. They have some outdoor storage within the parking lots. When I say outdoor storage, it's really vehicles that are under repair. So we just, we questioned, first off, is where are they going to put this extra storage, especially if they're adding additional operations site? Where are they going to put the proposed outdoor storage? We have noted that they are indicating, in one plan set potential, parking within this alley. And again, there's only 13 feet in width. Is that sufficient to have parking within that location, et cetera? Second, we note, if they have a proposed trash enclosure located at the southwest corner of the site, located in this corner. First off, if they have car storage or parking within this alley, how can a trash truck get within that, get into that location? And secondly, at 13 feet in width, can a trash truck actually maneuver and get into that space and get out of that space safely? So we have questions about that. Third, there is a requirement in the zoning ordinance for outdoor storage, so again, vehicle storage. It must be screened behind a screen wall. We don't see any screening proposed as part of the application. Specifically, there should be screen along this property line to screen anything going in this portion of the alley. Location of the building, I'm not sure how a car could be parked here, you could safely get in and out of this alley, especially if they're going to have a proposed trash enclosure. You'll notice there's a concern about this part of the building, if you read my comments. Our next concern with regards to site plan itself is they have a existing parking space here. We, I have concerns about cars coming and backing in and out of this parking space, about the safety of it, especially with its location to this access point on Dequender, and how cars can safely maneuver within this parking space itself. In addition, there's a requirement for parking lot screening, which the applicant is showing in this location, but it's not showing along Dequender. And lastly, the applicant has indicated a waiting area internally to the convenience store. It's unusual to have a waiting area in a convenience store, and so we're questioning, is that part of the service area, et cetera? So just a question about what that actual waiting area is within the convenience store itself. The other significant issue is in relation to parking. They're required by ordinance to have 22 parking spaces. They're only showing 18 on site. In addition, we do know, we have concerns with at least two parking spaces, this parking space and this parking space, which may reduce their parking to 16 spaces in total. So they have the potential to be deficient in six spaces, based on what they are providing. So there are three options for the applicant to consider. One is to seek a variance from the zoning board appeals. Two is to add additional parking on site. And the third is to reduce their parking demand. So shrink the building, shrink the uses, however that may work. But right now, they are underparked by at least four to six parking spaces, based on what we've seen. Those are the major significant items. I do want to note, there are other smaller items that we have noted. That includes the parking, screen the parking along Dequender. They need to add bicycle parking. The applicant has not provided any landscape details. They show landscaping. They haven't provided us the number and the size and species of those landscaping. They do note a trash enclosure, again, on the southwest corner of the site. They don't indicate how they propose to screen that trash enclosure. They did not provide building lighting fixture details. And we've asked them to provide building material samples and a 3D model of the building. And lastly, their open space calculation was incorrect on their application, so we asked them to revise their open space calculation. Renderings. I always enjoy looking at arts renderings. I do almost feel like they are a work of art in themselves. So this is a rendering provided by the applicant. This is the new facade proposed by the applicant. We did ask that more details in terms of materials be provided. So we're not, I'm not exactly sure what the detail, what the materials are that the applicant is proposing. But this elevation is looking at the building from Dequender, and this is looking at the elevation from Long Lake. This is a reskinning of the building and not addition. The addition itself is in this back corner of the building. This is where the proposed addition is. This is a reskinning or refacing of the building. This is, this would front on Dequender. This is simply a reskinning or refacing of the building on Long Lake. This is the south side of the building, facing the southern property line. This is at the zero lot line, just to confirm. This is a side elevation facing, I guess it's a CVS or Walgreens, the side elevation where the trash enclosure is located in this general, general corner of the building. So in theory, we do support the reinvestment of the site. However, we do note there's a number of site plan issues that need to be addressed. Because they are required to get a variance from the zoning board appeals, the planning commission cannot take action on this item tonight. They need to go to the zoning board appeals and receive a variance. If they don't receive a variance, obviously the site plan will have to change to meet the setback requirements. So we do recommend the planning commission hold a public hearing, consider public testimony, provide direction to the applicant, but ultimately postpone action until the variance can be considered by the zoning board appeals. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Carlisle? Mr. Rahman?
The existing building is already violating the ordinance, right?
It's, we deem it, it's called illegal.
My question is, do we have a variance already for that existing building?
They do not. It's a legal non-conforming structure. It was built under a different code that had different setback requirements, so that at the time of construction, it was not required to get a variance.
So this time, both have to get the variance, or just a new part?
Just the new, we only consider the new part to get the variance. Essentially, they're getting a variance to expand a non-conforming structure, so it really covers that whole wall elevation, but really focusing only on the addition. We're not going to make them We're not going to make them, if they don't get the variance per se, we're not going to go make them rip out the existing building, is what I'm saying.
More questions from the commission? Yes, Mr. Faison?
Is there a trash enclosure on the property now? I was just wondering where, if so, where it was. No?
There's a dumpster, but there's no trash enclosure.
And where is it located?
The dumpster is located, where are we all located now?
I think it's in this, Mr. Faison, it appears like it's in this back of the building, back in, back in here.
So it's kind of consistent with where the new one is proposed.
It's actually exactly where they're putting the addition.
That is, that is, that's the option.
Right here?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so they're putting the addition back here, the addition's going all the way to this rear property, this, this side property line, and the, they're going to push it into this corner.
Well, it's just going to go to the other corner, so this way it's going to work.
Any more questions from the commission?
One more question.
Go ahead.
Is the current building a one-story building?
Correct.
Or a two-story?
Correct, one.
Yes.
And then the, the proposed building, is it taller than the?
The portion that's, portion that's two stories.
It's a couple of feet tall, just.
Yeah, it didn't look like it was much taller. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions from the members of the commission? I just have one quick one. Now, on the aerial right there, it shows a number of cars parked to the south, which I believe is for the Walgreens drugstore. If they, the parking consideration obviously is a concern. If they were to come back to the commission in the future, if they get the variance from the ZBA, would they be able to come back with an agreement that they have a, an agreement with Walgreens or whoever owns that strip mall to use that for additional parking overflow?
Well, a couple of issues. Depends on what type of parking it is. Is it parking for non-repaired vehicles is one issue. If it's parking for employee or employee parking per se, that would be permitted under review and approval by the planning commission. One thing that we would confirm is this, the agreement, I think the city attorney's also want to look at the agreement to make sure it's a valid agreement between the two parties. And then second off, we'd have to confirm that that still leaves enough parking for the Walgreens itself, too. So we don't want, we don't want to shortchange their parking based on providing additional parking for this applicant. But yes, there is shared parking agreements that it can be reviewed by the planning commission.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Parakis?
I do have a question. That alleyway, right now, it looks like there's a bunch of cars parked in it, is that correct?
Yes.
I mean, it looks like they're, like that first car has to wait for all the other cars to leave before, I mean, is that right? That they're like parallel parked and there's no way to get out except for one at a time?
Yes, and to be honest, I can't tell if those are operative vehicles or vehicles that are under repair. I don't know, but yes, to your point, you'd have to move one first and then move the other, then move the other.
Is that permitted?
It's not permitted by ordinance in terms of, it doesn't count towards legal parking. But if the planning commission would allow that for vehicle storage, it could count towards vehicle storage provided that it's properly screened.
Okay.
Any more questions from the commission? Seeing done, we'll call up the applicant, and so our recording secretary doesn't get mad at me, I'll remind you to make sure you sign in up here when you make your remarks.
While he's signing in, I'd like to pass this out.
Thank you.
I think I got these right.
I'm an Asian architect, and I have the owner here, Sam Askar. I guess we'll both be presenting this a little bit at a time. We realize a lot of the issues that were brought up, so I think this new handout will help address those. One of the concerns was the alleyway for parking. We're hoping, there is a requirement for employee parking, so our intention is to use that for three employee spaces where they could be trapped there all day while they're working, and they're used to maneuvering, so we hope that that could be a viable solution. The dumpster issue is also a valid one. What we're proposing is a screen dumpster where it's held basically six of the seven days, and when, if you look at the site plan, the revised site plan, there's a red square in the upper corner of the northwest corner. What, talking to their trash pickup personnel, we're omitting the compact car rolling down on a roller in that corner for easy access, and that would happen at the day of pickup and then rolled back in into sight. So the owner is willing to maneuver the cars as need be to have that option available, but then it'll be moved back after the pickup, which I believe is, happens, what, early in the morning, I think?
Yes.
So I think in general, the public won't be aware of that. The main intent of the addition, one of the main intents, when you look at the floor plan, is it gives us seven-car storage capability for repairs or storage. One of the problems of the existing storage is a lot of tires are out there. There will be racks on the rear of this building, multiple racks where they could put all their used tires or new tires. So we're trying to clean up the site and put everything inside the building. So that addition is a major benefit for that reason. The other thing that he does have retail, and he does like to expand to retail, but with offering other products, but the waiting area to answer Ben's question is just for the repair facility. We may opt to revise that and not even have that, but at the time we were developing this, he thought it was a good place where people could get a cup of coffee, sit there and, like a lot of dealerships would have. That might get smaller, but the intent is just for people that are having their cars serviced. The retail area needs storage, so the expansion allows a little bit of rest, storage, and if you look at the second floor plan, he was, wasn't aware that, in his mind, he just specified the upper level as office, but in reality, he doesn't need more than a 300-square-foot office area. So the upper area would be storage as well. So if we could use the formula Ben had for offices, that would only require one car instead of three. So if we could go with 20 cars instead of 22, that would be one way of shrinking the usage, but the whole upper area is just a one-single-person private office, which is existing right now, but it's being relocated on an upper level. So if that's not a viable solution and you still want two parking spaces, I looked at, how could I get two more spaces? And you'll see it on the site plan on the right side facing Dequender. I have the Cs representing compact, but I measured it out, and if you had an eight-foot compact car space, that could be counted as two spaces. You have 12 feet of maneuverability for, for the aisle there, and it'll be similar to what's happening on the upper portion of the canopy where you have some parking there. But if we follow this concept, we could get the 22 cars if you hold us to the 22. But I think with the office being one-person office, maybe we don't need those two cars there. So that was one of the questions I wanted to bring up to you to see how you would feel if, or we could keep those two cars and eliminate the one car to the south, which would give us one extra car. But the owner told me that he's never had a problem. A lot of these cars are controlled maneuvering by them, so they never had an accident, so it's not any different than the three spaces to the north in reality. So I think we could meet the parking with this concept. The other thing you'll notice is the bike rack is in that paved area that's striped area that's not being utilized other than the striped area. That'd be a great place for a bike rack, which he's willing to put there. And in order to accommodate the landscaping plan, we're, we're willing to put a two-foot, six-inch-high masonry brick wall facing Dequender. If we do have the compact cars as you wish, to have that allowable, we'll put the wall there as well, rather than putting landscaping there because there's not enough room for, he would rather keep the car spaces than lose another two or three spaces. The calculation for open space, I apologize, I was assuming it's open space other than the building, but when I read the ordinance later, it was excluding the pavement for parking, and we're at 9%. That was probably acceptable at the time this was done, so I don't know if that's grandfathered in as well as the landscaping requirement for one car, one tree, as well as the previous person. This is hopefully grandfathered in so we don't have to follow losing cars for internal trees inside the parking lot. With a small site like this, it would be very difficult to try to incorporate that. What you have, the rest of the packet answers the lands, the only new landscaping is the raised planter. It's basically 19 feet by three feet. One of the things the owner said is if you do want to expand the landscape, he's willing to lose the three-foot sidewalk along the east side of Dequender, break that up and make that a continuation of this planter. But right now, we just have that one area for landscaping, and when you turn the page, you'll see the type of shrubs. They're, they're spreading junipers and yews and then some flowers that he would put to mix the color. The next page gives you the construction of the dumpster wall. The dumpster wall is actually a continuation of the same block that's going to be used in the building. This is a cutface block, and then the screen wall will be brick. And then the next page is the only fixture we're putting in there is recessed lighting on the new canopy. Photometrics is the next page. It doesn't go beyond 15 feet of the building, so it adds to the entrance to make it more inviting as an entranceway. And then the next, next pages are the material which are similar to what you see around the city right now. It's a fiber cement board wall system, a lot better than hardy board or EFIS. It's used a lot, and when you turn the pages, you can see it's a wall-hung system. They could have the wood grain system, which is what we're using in a part of the building, and the other part is going to be smooth like a stone finish. Actually, when you look at page 11 on there, it shows you, similar to what I'm trying to do, where you have a mix of color and smooth and, and the different textures involved there. The last page of that material is the cutface stone. It'll be gray-toned. And then I did, I was able to quickly do some renderings, they're not 100% what I like. I prefer my hand drawings as well, but they do show the character of all three sides and elevations and the coloration, so it gives you a lot better view of what's going on. So I think I addressed pretty much all the concerns I saw written up by Carlisle, and I guess I'd leave it up to you to see if this is presentable enough to go for the variance or if there should be some modifications from what this second proposal is. This is Sam Askar, if he wants to add anything to what I said.
A couple of, couple of things. The main thing actually for the, for the building, too, is to clean up the site. I've been there on this location since 1993. It's been there for a long time, serving the community, maybe if somebody from Troy, definitely I worked in somebody's car for that long time, and I hope I did a good job. I survived a lot of road construction, and I still made it over there, but with all the competition that came to the Macomb County across the street from me, it's time for me, I, I need to start thinking of, to switch, you know, the building to that 20/20 look. The last few months has been very, very, very hard on us with Kroger building, that super Kroger with the gas, across the street with the liquor. But the main thing, actually, a couple of things that I need to address over here, as Carl said, is, is definitely we need, we did not have any issues actually with the dumpster. The dumpster is just, just going to move from this location to the other location, and we're not taking any, we're not, we're not going through any landscaping. So we're only building on, on the side, and there is no landscaping. So we're not decreasing any landscaping, actually, we're going to add landscaping. Okay? And then the rest is, the office is, actually, we're not, the offices exist now, but the office actually is just going to go upstairs, you know what I mean? And it's just, we only needed 300 or 200 square foot whenever we build it, so it's just for my private office. I mean, 16 hours a day, so I need to sit someplace over there. So, but the rest is we need it as a storage. So, because if you look at the old site, actually, that storage, the outside is, is all mess, and we're not, we're not interested in keeping this. So we need to be, clean up the site completely, and that's what we're looking for. And definitely, you guys know the site, I always, the site is always have a flower landscape, and I always maintain all the holidays and, and I'll, of course, we're going to keep it the same, and if it's not better. We never had a problem with the parking. The problem is, is because we, we technically, when the customer come in, you know what I mean, they leave their cars, you know? And we the one who move the cars to the parking lot. They, it's very rarely that the people come in and leave, and they go park and they come inside. They usually use the two front parking, they leave it over there, the employees move their cars, and, and that's, we never have an issue with the parking lot. We never have an issue parking. We never have, I mean, I think in my time, I know it's an old site, but since the time I've been there for a long time, I never have an accident. So thanks God, you know, that's a good thing to know. As far as the dumpster is the same idea, like from here to here, we always have to move all the cars so the truck can come and take the dumpster and go. And I already contacted Tringali, and they have no problem to provide the six, six-foot container on wheels. They did it, a lot of spaces, you know what I mean? So it's just going to be easy to push it outside, pick it up, and they'll do it exactly like all the time. And even they have, they have a pickup, they have two weeks, two times a week pickup, so that's will, we're already going to go with that, so that will never have an issue if it's overflow or anything like that. The other thing is, as far as the, the waiting area, yeah, we don't have a waiting area as, when we read it, it's like, I think it's, it's misunderstanding. The waiting area is what we're doing is only for the repairs. So the people come in, even if they're waiting inside, you know what I mean? In that case, these cars are going to be inside, so it's not going to be outside or on the parking lot. So they're waiting all for their cars, and that's when they take it, they will leave right away. And we, we're going to, and last year, actually, we extended our, our pickup and dropping cars from 5:00 in the morning to 12:00 in the midnight, so people can pick up their car up to 12:00 in the midnight. So we don't have an issue of a parking lot. And, and if we expanded and everything, we will have an extra four cars inside if we need it later in the future if somebody left it overnight. So these are, we're going to consider them as parking spaces like any other home or anything, because these are extra cars that, that, because we're already existing, the base has already exists, so if we calculate it, and these cars, we can use it as a parking where the storages, because we will have enough space, actually. I wish we can get your blessing today to move forward with this project, and I thank you guys. If you have any questions, please.
Any questions for the petitioner and the architect? Yes, Mr. Faison?
Just, just a couple of questions. What, what kind of repairs are you doing?
I'm sorry, sir?
What kind of automotive repairs?
We do minor repairs, sir. Tire changes, brakes, minor repairs usually. Oil changes mostly, yeah.
So it sounds like things that are done in a day or a few hours?
Yes. I will say 80% of most of the customer, they will pick up their cars daily. Yes, it will be done daily.
And then the second question I had is for the addition, I see the four kind of parking spots in the, in the addition area. Are those, is that just parking and storage, or is that, or are those vehicles being worked on now? Are you increasing your capacity to work on vehicles?
No, not necessary. It's, we don't need extra to work on, but it will be, it will be very helpful, you know what I mean? If you come in and we can push the car inside, either we leave it, if the people are going to leave their car because we cannot get the parts, so we can have more space. to leave their car because we cannot get the parts, so we can have more space inside, outside the parking lot. The, the problem is, is, is not the workforce that we have, the problem is, is getting the parts for the car to be done. So that's the delay that we have sometimes if we have an issue with the parking. So these, this particular four cars over here, if we push the car inside, it will be phenomenal for us. Definitely, this is, the way I look at it is extra four spaces of parking. And, and definitely, this is going to clean the site completely, and that's what my main goal is.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Ms. Prakas.
First of all, I'd like to say it looks great. I, I really like the new look, and I think it's a huge improvement.
Thank you.
So you talk a lot about the main goal of cleaning up, and it sounds like you might have like tires and parts that are currently outside, and you talk about this storage where a lot of it will get moved inside, so it will look nicer. The, the question I have is, you talked about reconfiguring the requirement of parking due to an upstairs office that will be small, but there will, and, and you didn't want us to account it for parking because a lot of the upstairs is going to be storage. What kind of storage would be upstairs? I mean, assuming that's more like a paperwork type of storage and not tires?
Uh, no, of course not tires. Yes. We don't, we don't, we don't store too many tires, you know what I mean? The, the, we do, we don't, the storage that we have is for the parts and for the store usually, for the, like the pop, and the candy, and all these kind of storage. So if we remove all this to make it upstairs, okay, it will have more space for the parts to be stored. Okay? And then more, more of the storage is for the used tires that, from the people's cars, so we need to take it outside. So if you look now, it's all the outside is mostly garbage, you know what I mean? That's what we want to get rid of. What is, but not garbage as a waste garbage. Garbage is like the used tires, the old metal, so these are the stuff that will wait and will look like, show the side and look ugly. So that's, we want to get rid of that. So that's will be inside, and that's why we have the other door, and then that will be kept either weekly or every ten days. Yes.
Any other questions from the commission? Mr. Apahedian?
The two locations where you are proposing the two spaces on the east side of the lot there, just on the east side of that canopy, just by looking at the dimensions, my first thought was that it leaves you really tight space, only twelve feet between vehicles if they're parked there, between the pumps and two vehicles. So right now, you actually have twenty feet from the pump to the curb, so I've used a gas station many times, and I've actually driven through that area.
Okay.
So if that area would have two cars parked right up against that curb, that, that would make it really tight, and I think it would actually create a hazardous situation with vehicles possibly, you know, not being able to go in there and pump adequately. And my other concern also is visibility from vehicles exiting your parking lot, visibility to the north, possible pedestrians or bicyclists coming south on that, on that sidewalk there if you got two vehicles parked there. So I'm not sure if that's the best location for vehicles, even though it's compact, it's for compact vehicles as you're designating it, it, it probably might create more of a hazard, a safety hazard for.
The idea over here is just to, to compromise.
To get the twenty-two, which I don't think we really need.
Yeah, I don't think we, we ever, I mean, we needed that much parking space, because mostly, we the one who park the customers' car. I mean, we, 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 we are a convenience store, so people will not come in, spend a lot of time over there. I mean, the time that they spend, it could be five, ten minutes just to pick up their cigarettes, pop, and leave. We don't have a, we're not interested in putting any restaurants, we're not interested in doing anything extra then. Even the extra space that we're going to add to the store, if it's, if it's going to go bigger and it's going to add to us, it's just to put extra coolers for extra pop, we have a beer of wine, so it's just the extra stuff that it needed it. Fix the coffee section, you know what I mean, just to make it a little bit bigger coffee section. But, and then the waiting area. And the waiting area actually, because the people, they're not waiting over there, but their cars is inside, otherwise, if they're gonna, if they're gonna leave their cars, in that case, they're not there, so their cars could be parking. So, yeah, those two spaces is, is just to meet, if we, if we don't need it, we don't have to put it.
Yeah, one thing I'd like to add to, which I forgot to mention, is the seven sixty, which was used for the calculations, include the exterior walls, the interior wall and the stair wall. The net area of the upstairs is really a lot less than that. So if you factor that and the one smaller office space, I think we only need one car instead of three, as was calculated. So if we could get that accepted, we would eliminate those two cars, and we'd meet the ordinance twenty, twenty cars if that's acceptable.
Yeah.
So, so you're saying you're just adding those on the site plan just to meet the ordinance?
The twenty-two as was stated.
But realistically, you won't even have any vehicles?
No, we don't have it. If we don't have to, we don't have to, yes.
Because the upstairs really triggered three, but I think in reality, it should be only one.
I mean, the calculation, because the, it shows like we have seven hundred eighty square foot of, of office space, but we don't need that much. We only, yeah.
Yeah, actually, this actual square footage is on the.
Yeah, we only need it for one office, it could be three hundred or two hundred, ten by ten. What I have now is ten by ten, that's more than, you know?
Really have like six hundred and thirty square feet, two eighty-eight office and a three fifty-two storage, the rest is wall and, what I did is I multiplied the exterior wall by exterior, and that's seven sixty. So it was a miscalculation on the parking calculation, because I was looking at another way of calculating parking. But if, if we could get the planning director to agree to the one car upstairs, I think we, we could eliminate those two compact cars and be good with it.
It's, it's not my call, it's their call.
Okay.
Eventually, Mr. Faison?
Just a question, I'm having difficulty following. So those two cars get you to twenty-two spaces?
Yes.
So how, how do you get to twenty? I thought your application had eighteen.
Well, I didn't count the three cars in the alley as employee, and we did lose one right above that for the dumpster location, the compact car. So what, in the end result, we ended up getting twenty-two if you counted those three.
Okay, I understand now, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Carlisle?
I just want to be real careful on this compact car issue. We don't have a designation of compact car on the ordinance. Either they meet the parking requirement of length or they don't. So this is not dimensioned, so they may not, we don't, we, they may not be able to get two cars in there based upon the requirements for length. So we don't have a provision for compact car parking. Just want to be very clear on that.
It's basically a foot and a half narrower compact car, but it's, it's forty-five-foot long length there, so we could get the full length, but a compact car is usually eight by sixteen. But if you don't, can't count that, I'd rather just get rid of it anyway for safety reasons and just modify the parking requirements based on the upper, upper level being a small office and the rest storage. If we could agree to that, I'm glad to get rid of that.
Yes, Ms. Prakas.
Yeah, I mean, I was just going to say, it's, it's not good for business, obviously, to have people frustrated with the parking, coming and going and, and not being able to circulate. So I guess you, you don't seem that concerned that parking is an issue. Are there any times of day, like, I, I don't know if, if you have a rush, I, I mean, it doesn't seem like there would be a time of day that's peak. It's not like a Starbucks where maybe in the morning, there's lines out the door. Do you have sort of a, a time of day where it is ever a problem, or are you saying that you really don't think parking is an issue?
We, I don't think it's parking is an issue, I'll be honest with you. I, I'll tell you, the main problem that we have sometimes is not the parking, is the people line up for the free air. I'm not going to lie to you. That's the only problem we have. I mean, I mean, but that's something I cannot control. So that's the only issue is, is that when the people line up for a free air, you know what I mean, it's hard for people to back up, but.
You can charge a dollar.
Don't force me. No, actually, I, I, I kept, I kept these people, thank us for that, and we're going to keep doing it. And, but like I tell you, that two, that, that, those two parking spaces that we put, just we try to show you that we are trying to compromise and come up to any solution to try to meet the requirement if we can. But it's not necessary at all. It's not something we, we want.
Mr. Tagle?
Question. As far as variances, is the, expanding the non-conformity the only variance, and is all of the questions about parking up to us?
I believe it is the only variance, the setback variance on the west side, and approving, approving the site plan special use is the purview of the planning commission, and approving any admin, any waivers in parkings. So for example, if the applicant is indicating that, that the upstairs office space, for example, is really going to be utilized by one person, and there's, it can maybe put a note on the site plan saying that, and it's mostly one person plus storage, that's within the purview of the planning commission to, to approve that, and to approve the, all of, all of the parking as part of the site plan. Did I answer your question?
You did. Can I have a follow-up?
Sure. As far as occupancy, and I'm sorry, I don't remember this, but does the ordinance tell you how to calculate occupants for different uses within a building, or do you refer to the building code to do that?
We refer to the building code for that.
So for a business occupancy, it's one hundred square feet per occupant. So if that's a two hundred and eighty-eight square foot room, the, the building code says three occupants could be there.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's, and again, that, that, if there's only one person in the office, that's great, but what the code says is that's a three, a possibly three-person office.
Correct, but for the purposes of determining parking, the zoning ordinance regulates that.
Well, that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
When you look at parking to figure the occupancy of a use within the building, is it the ordinance that says if you have an office, there's so many square feet calculated for the number of?
I misunderstood your question. So, so yes, the zoning ordinance has a calculation, it's, for this, for this is one, it's one, one space per three hundred square foot of floor area, as per zoning.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, John.
No, it's fine.
The, the other thing that is, what we were, years ago, when we did a modification to this, whatever planning commission was there, they accepted the two fifty per square foot for the retail area. We're now using the one twenty-five, which is more of a constraint, so I'm not sure whether that is another area of modification, but if you follow the two fifty rule, that's part of the zoning ordinance for the retail, when you break it down, we would need half that, that was calculated too. So there's a little negotiating with the, how you calculate that, that I, I think is a hardship on the client too. So I think, in, in reality, he more or less meets it if you go with, especially with the retail, as one, two fifty versus one twenty-five, and the upstairs is one space. So I think if we get twenty there, we're, we're good to go, if, you know, as, as long as everyone's in agreement.
Yes, Ms. Prakas.
Yeah, I had a question for Mr. Savadat. How do you feel about that parallel parking in the alley for the employees?
I, I think it, it's, it could work. It's really how it's, how it's managed. I mean, I was just telling Ben, I got a guy, like Sam. Everyone needs a guy. So, you know, the weekend, you, you get a, you start to lose pressure in one of your tires, you need an oil change, so what I, my, my wife and I, we drop a vehicle off at my guy, and I put my mail, my, my keys in the slot with the thing, and I, and I park. And on Monday mornings, it's probably a lot more cars than on a Wednesday morning, for example. And it's, it's really creative in terms of where you park on the site, and, and you get what it looks like that aerial photo we saw with the parking kind of all over the place, and it's, it's really kind of impossible to predict how many people are going to drop their cars off on a, you know, any particular day. But what it really boils down to is, is how it's managed. And it sounds like, it sounds like the choreograph is pretty good, you know, with, with the car, with the cars and the, and the dumpster and whatnot. He's been doing it for twenty, twenty-six years, twenty-seven years, twenty-seven years. And I don't, I'm not aware of a lot of complaints that we've received in terms of code enforcement, so it sounds like Sam's, Sam knows what he's doing. It's not ideal, but again, it's, it's really how it, how the, how the proprietor manages it.
Okay. I mean, thank you, that helps. I mean, the only concern, I guess, still would be, I mean, I hate to say it like this, but the next owner, what happens, you know, twenty years, thirty years down, and the next people come in and, and they don't, and we've already approved all this, and now parking is a problem, and they don't know how to manage it, so are we? I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there.
I, can I, can I answer this?
Yeah.
But don't forget, if we, if we count those four cars that are inside, in that case, we already, you know, like, these four cars is not calculated. So if we have those four cars inside the storage, so we don't need those three, we don't need those two, and we already met the parking requirement.
The twenty?
Yes. So it's just like, I mean, we, we're trying to.
Same as a house that, when you do condos or homes.
Yes, it's just like, yeah.
You count the interior of the house, as well as the driveway is countable parking space, I think that's what you're trying to say.
Exactly, yes.
So he wants you to look at it that way as another option. It's a failsafe.
And, and like, like Brent, what he said, it's, it's, like, when he drop his cars, it all depends on the guy, how he park it, how he move it, how he, and we've been doing it for a long time, and, and like I tell you, it's, it's not the customer who parked the car, we the one who parked the car, who the, we the one who give the customer the keys, so we know, I mean, we help him to get his car away. Yeah.
Mr. Tagle?
Yeah, I, I think you've heard from a number of the commissioners that we think you're doing a good job here of improving that corner. I, I have some reservations about the congestion of movement on that site, vehicle movement and pedestrian movement. It just seems like we're trying to get so much on that site that I've had some concerns about it. Now, that might mean that, you know, there could be some relaxing of the number of cars that were going to be required, but right now, the way the plan is, even though you've shown some compact cars, and again, you put those compact cars, you put a thirty-inch brick wall next to them, am I going to bang my door every time I open the car? You know, I mean, those kinds of things, or like Mr. Apahedian said, if there's cars parked there, how does that affect people pulling in and out of the pumps adjacent to the cars? So again, I, I don't want to discourage you from what you're trying to accomplish, but I do have some concerns about the, the level of congestion and amount of movement between people and vehicles on this site.
We don't, we not necessarily need those two parked lots.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah, we definitely, yeah. And, and I, I assure you, that level of conjunctions and amount of movements over there, we don't have it anymore.
I don't know what you mean by that.
Well, our business went down to half.
Well, hopefully with this, it's going to go more than what it was, right?
I'm sorry, but this is the truth.
But the objective is to get it beyond what it used to be.
Yes, yeah. Well, that's what we're trying, but, but we, we never had any issues since I operated since 1993 until now, and I think we're going to manage it. I hope we're going to manage it much better this time.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Any more questions from the commission? I just had one quick one, it's kind of a follow-up to the concern, number one, that this, it looks like a vast improvement over the appearance of what you've got there now, even though it's a nice station as it is, but this looks really nice. The concern, I'm sure several of us have expressed about how congested the site is, have you ever thought about approaching Walgreens to see about some kind of an agreement to use some of their parking for like your employees?
Not, not necessarily, because I don't think Walgreens itself on the property, and I don't know who's on the property, it's like subleases. Yes, so we never, we never had an issue with them before, you know, because they are our customer and, and we are their customer, so we never had an issue with them before. The issue is, is people park their cars over there, you know what I mean? It's a huge parking lot, so, and we get the blame for it, but I don't think they have a, we have an issue personally with them before, so, but I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure, I'll be honest with you, who to contact. We, we usually go to the manager, you know what I mean? I don't think they have a problem, but I'm, I'm not sure if we are targeting the right person. Yes.
Thank you. Any further questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I'll have you take a seat, just in case we have a public hearing, or somebody's going to speak at the public hearing. Before I make you listen to me reread this again, I wanted to see if there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this topic. Anyone at all? Oh, all right, come on up, and I'm going to read this again. Sorry I have to make you listen to me. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. A public hearing is an opportunity for residents to share their comments on a specific project with the planning commission. Everyone in attendance who wishes to speak will be provided that opportunity. We appreciate everyone who kind of came out tonight to share their thoughts to the planning commission, and your comments are important. Before I open it, it's important to set some ground rules so that it can be an effective and efficient public hearing. If you wish to address the commission, you can come forward, which you've already done, and please print your name and address on. And please print your name and address on the sign-in sheet, and begin your remarks by stating your name, address, and where your home or business is located relative to the property that we're discussing tonight. Please address all comments to the planning commission, and please be respectful of the commission staff, the planning consultant, applicants, and those in the audience. This is an opportunity for you to provide comments, it is not a discussion or debate. And this public meeting should be handled with decorum and professionalism, so we ask that you refrain from talking, applauding, or other expressions of emotion during the meeting. And please keep your comments related to the item and limited to three minutes. With that, we'll call upon you.
Thank you very much. My name is Mark Deagle. I live at 2866 English Drive. My brother Murray Deagle builds homes in Troy, and I'm coming here to speak on behalf of Sam. I've known him since he moved in in 1993. I bring both my cars there, so does many of the people in the area. I've never met a more honest person that I would have work on my car. And when she said about the air, we went around and got tremendous amount of signatures in the area, not one person complained. And one man said, you know why I'm signing this? I have four cars, and I could come here and get free air. This man has three beautiful kids, a beautiful wife, and he loves Troy, and he loves the state of Michigan, and he's always willing to do what it takes. Why, I think you should approve it after they make some changes. It would help the beauty of the store. It would bring more money into the city, more jobs. Obviously, he would benefit it too. But the neighbor loves him. You go there, it's packed as far as people wanting to get their cars fixed, because he doesn't rip people off. And I'm just a friend of his. He's not paying me or anything like that. And my brother goes there, and my brother and me have been living in this town since 1972. My brother builds homes. I would appreciate that you would give him the time, you know, and the consideration if he makes a few changes, I think would be best for the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else that would like to address the planning commission? Well, we'll call you back up after the public hearing is closed, so seeing no further comments, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Would the commissioners like to hear some more comments from the applicant?
Sure.
Come on back up.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say that we did, I did send, give the planning commission some signatures from the, yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
We have.
We have those, yes. And you might want to, because this will come back to the zoning board of appeals, you might want to make sure these people are aware of that for that meeting so that they could send their signatures in for that as well, so. Any, since we can't actually vote on this tonight, are there any further comments or discussion from members of, yes?
I had no idea that air wasn't free. I mean, honestly, I had no idea, so you can tell who puts air in the tires at my house.
Any further, yes, Mr. Faison.
I have a question for staff. I've heard the applicant say a couple of times that in the addition, there'll be four cars that are parked, right? They're indoors, and I guess I'm looking at the current site plan, and they could be parked outside. But does our calculation give any credit for those four vehicles?
The short answer is yes and no. The ordinance specifies, similar to a single-family home or condominium, the order specifies that you need to have, you need to have three, you need to have two spaces for each service bay, plus one for every employee. It does not dictate that those spaces need to be indoor or outdoor, similar to an apartment building, does not dictate that your parking spaces would be indoor and outdoor. When I calculated the parking area, I did not calculate the spaces interior to the building because I couldn't verify those would remain as indoor parking spaces, or they would be filled up with tools or other vehicles. So, no, I did not count the spaces interior towards counting towards their parking regulations. That's something that planning commission can certainly discuss with the applicant. But no, there's no clear direction from the ordinance saying that you count the indoor or you count outdoor spaces. It could be either or.
And I can understand why you didn't count them for all the reasons that you raised.
Okay, can I just, I want to jump in real quick with parking. I think from our standpoint, I think on its face, we don't have concern that the site is going, the site has enough parking. I think our concern is, and it's very hard with auto repair shops, is those viable parking spaces being used for vehicles that are being repaired or inoperable vehicles. So I think if the applicant can come back with some assurances about where potentially they would store cars after they're working on them, I don't think we have a concern that there's not enough parking on-site if those spaces are open for dedicated for customers that are coming to the convenience store, et cetera.
Any further comments or questions from the planning commission? I guess one question for Mr. Savinat. If the applicant wanted to come back with an assurance policy in his back pocket about approaching whoever owns that Walgreens site, would you be able to have information for who we might be able to contact for entering into that discussion?
We could try to help them.
Okay, all right, thank you. Do we need, is there any other information you need from the planning commission, Mr. Savinat?
The role here is to discuss and provide feedback. The applicant mentioned he was looking for your blessing. You actually can't take any action, so you really can't formally provide that blessing, but I think, I think we provided him with some very good feedback.
Okay. Questions? Yes, Mr. Raman.
So we are agreeing that we're not going to have those two compact car parking spots? Is that what's the direction at this point of time?
We just saw the revised plan tonight. There are no dimensions on these plans, so I would request that the applicant actually go to the zoning board of appeals, either receive the variance or not, and then give us a revised site plan showing where potential parking can be. And we can look at that compact parking based on a dimension plan that we can actually evaluate, but it's hard on the fly tonight to tell you whether it works or not.
Yeah, okay, I think that's a good idea, so, thank you.
Any further comments from members of the commission? Seeing none, the applicant and the architect have received some feedback. It looks like some of the comments that staff had made, you've already taken into account, so we will see you again after you've gone from the ZBA. Did you have another comment you've had?
I just kind of like to have a general consensus on a few items so we know we've resolved some of this. Is there a general consensus that the dumpster issue is adequate the way I presented it tonight where we rolled it out? I'd just like to get a feedback on that. And then I think the recalculation of the office area will warrant removal of those two compact spaces if in agreement, so if I get a little more positive thing with that, I would present the final site plan without those compact cars and basically with the dumpster being rolled out and we eliminate the compact car as I have it on the plan there, and basically agree to a 20-car solution is what I'm, if I could get an idea or consensus with that, that'd be great.
Let's see what the commissioners have to say. Is that general consensus of members of the commission?
Yep.
Yes.
Sorry, I have to do this. I guess I'm just, not to delay the meeting no longer, the site is currently serviced with an actual dumpster. My question is, is with expanding the operation, an auto repair shop in a convenience store generates a significant amount of trash. How often would a trash, how often would you have to have a trash truck come here if you're going to have a rollout trash enclosure to service the site?
Today is once a week. We are switching it twice a week. Come on out. I'm sorry. Today is twice, once a week, we are doing it twice a week. Just so, we do not know if we're going to need it or not, but for, for, what we think is if it's going to be that big, so in that case, we are doing it twice a week.
Okay. Let me, well...
Yes.
The concern is, these rolling units aren't very big, and so is twice enough going to be sufficient or not? You know, I don't know. The concern about that is if trash piles up, it piles up on-site and around the rolling bins, and it doesn't get picked up. At least where there's a trash enclosure, it's within a larger contained area. So I guess from a staff standpoint, I still want, we would like a little more information with the, with this trash issue before we can make a determination whether it's sufficient or not would be the point.
Today, we have eight-foot, I think they call it eight-foot, if I'm not wrong, eight-foot container. So what are we going to have? We're going to have six-foot twice a week. We have eight-foot now, once a week, we're going to have six-foot, but twice a week.
Things yards, yeah.
Yes. So that's what the plan is.
Again, we just like a little more information provided after the meeting that we can confirm that that's a sufficient, should be sufficiently deal with their issues.
Would you like from us to provide a letter from Tringali for that? That's what we're shooting?
That would help.
Definitely, yes.
Any more comments from the commission? Seeing none, I guess we are finished with this particular item on the agenda, and I believe the applicant has some feedback, both from staff and from the commission, on what we would need to see if you get approval from the ZBA. So thank you for coming out tonight. Next on the agenda is public comment for items on the current agenda. Anyone here wish to speak on an item on the agenda? Seeing none, planning commission comment. I will start down at this end. Ms. Zarnecki, do you have any comments?
No, thank you.
Ms. Prakas?
Nope.
None? Ron? Mr. Raman? Mr. Apahidian? Ms. Cruz?
The only comment that I'll make tonight is you did a really nice job running the meeting. I know you are a trained professional, but, you know, kudos to you tonight, and you had a nice crowd to work with.
Yes, I did, yes. Yes, I was thankful for that crowd. Mr. Faison?
Nothing.
Mr. Tagel?
Thank you.
Ms. Dufresne?
Thank you.
Mr. Savinat?
So Dave and I were talking before the meeting, and Dave, I think my numbers are right, you were on city council for six years, then you had a hiatus of about four months, you said, and then you were on ZBA for 11 years, and then you transitioned over to the planning commission for years. That's...
That's about it.
Seventeen straight years of service to the community with a four-month hiatus. Pretty impressive.
It's the high pay, you know. Mr. Carlisle, did you have anything?
No.
Mr. Savinat, did you want to mention city council's action on two of our planning commission recommendations?
You're a pro, Mr. Lambert, that's what 17 years of service gets you. So those of you who were bored last night, were, wanted to watch me present the items on city council, would know that two items that were before planning commission, both rezonings, one was the Clearview Homes rezoning application located at the southwest corner of Rochester and Dieta. It was rezoning from R1B to O Office. It was approved last night unanimously, 6-0 by city council. And then the Sylvan Wood rezoning, the northwest corner of Sylvan Wood and Rochester Road. It was initially before the planning commission, if you recall, in 2018, for a conditional rezoning for 10 units. That was ultimately denied by city council in 2019. This was just a straight rezoning, and it was also denied unanimously by city council last night, 6 to 0. So one rezoning was approved and one was denied.
Can I, sorry. Can I ask what was the planning commission's recommendation on that?
It was a recommendation of approval five to four for Sylvan Wood.
Interesting.
I should note, too, that, and when the site plan comes back for the first one, I know several members of city council expressed concerns about the access of a Dieta, so I think that'll be something that'll be part of our discussion when that returns to us. Almost a subtle message to take very careful look at that when that site plan comes back to us.
Yeah, it's difficult, it's difficult to really roll up your sleeves for straight rezonings because we don't have a site plan. We have a concept plan, that's just a sketch, and it's non-binding, so we don't know what the square footage is going to be, we don't know what, you know, exactly what the parameters and what the characteristics are of the office, so it's really difficult to get into site planning issues with that application. So we can look forward to seeing that in the near future.
Mr. Chair, I do have one more comment. At the risk of, you know, kicking the hornet's nest, you know, we hear a lot of comment from the residents here in the city who've expressed their desire for green space and the concern over the fact that that green space appears to be disappearing at a pretty rapid pace in the city. And I would just like to suggest that some of the most underutilized and potentially most beautiful green space is right here on the Civic Center property. And I think that it is a shame that we disregard all of the things that could potentially be done to this green space to the benefit of residents who seemingly are very interested in preservation. And I'm talking about things that would make it a larger park space, not necessarily what Mr. Gibbs had proposed as a village in and of itself 18 months ago. So like I said, at the risk of kicking the hornet's nest, I do think that we have the potential to do something lovely right here on the Civic Center property that would be very beneficial to Troy.
Absolutely. Any further comments? Seeing none, we are adjourned.